Okay, we're there.
All right. It is 2:33. Let's call the meeting in order, please. And thank you, everybody for joining us. Hey, there's Vicky. Thank you all for being here today. Annette, thank you for getting us all set up technologically here.
Oops, I don't know why we're getting that feedback.
All right. It is 2:33. Let's call the meeting in order, please. Lovely. Thank you, everybody. Hopefully, the feedback will get fixed. If anybody's on the phone as well as in person, that could be a cause of that kind of problem, by the way. Let's do a roll if we could, Jennifer.
Foster.
Present.
Freeling.
Present.
Hoyt.
Present.
Krieger is absent. Lamert.
Present.
Lester.
Present.
Shuniman. You're muted.
Mute. All right, you got me now?
I do. Wagner.
Okay.
Here, President.
And White is absent. You have seven present.
So we do have a quorum. That's great. We do have the minutes from August 11th that you've all should have seen and had a chance to read through. Are there any additions or corrections?
No.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Freeling. I would make that motion.
I can. We just heard a second from Eric. If we could have a vote on that, please, Jennifer.
Foster.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Hoyt.
Aye.
Krieger is absent. Lamert.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Shuniman.
Yes.
Wagner.
Aye.
And White is absent. You have seven yays.
Spectacular. Communications, Katie.
We have a communication that Pipestone Township. They had reviewed, or they updated their master plan and just before COVID and before the shutdown, they had scheduled their public hearing, but it had been postponed. So they've rescheduled it for September 18th. And that's just for their master plan. Final review. So there was a lot of extra time for the public to review that master plan. So they'll be acting and adopting that plan at that time. We also received a resignation for Julia Smith. She has been asked to do more with the city of Coloma. So her time is being spent more value. She felt that she was it was a better fit for her to use her time with the city of Coloma. So she enjoyed her time here, but she's moved moving on. She's still still volunteering and still doing some good stuff, but directed to our community.
Well, we certainly appreciate her time and good commission. Certainly, her tenure predates me by some time and some of you were on pre-meeting when I was chatting with Annette and she's in the process of resurrecting the public communications on open commission seats, which she has struggled for us and others. As you all know, we now have two open seats. So if you're aware of someone who you think might be a worthwhile party, that application is, I believe, on the county website. Is it not? I don't know. Is on the website, so you can you can direct people there and the county commission will be hopefully acting on that in the next couple of months. Do we have any public to comment today? Annette, I think you're muted.
I muted myself. Yeah. Hang on, I'm gonna go check.
No problem.
I've lost Terry's picture.
We have a choice, Lois. You can you can take your picture off as well as your sound.
Oh, I see.
Okay, you're live on YouTube. My chat's not working, but it looks like I'm the only one on there watching at this point. I'm gonna keep track of that and I'm also gonna get ahold of our IS guys so we can just make sure that we're all legit, but it is live and it's out there available. So if I get something, I'll kind of flag you or something and let you know.
Super. Thank you.
Yep.
We'll assume for the moment there is no public comment. If that changes, we'll we'll roll the flow. As we all business come before the commission.
No business at this time.
All right. Well, then, Katie, you can just keep right on rolling to do business, if you would, please.
Okay, so I have a new computer and I'm not really sure. Let's see if this works. You might see a whole desktop share. Oh, no.
It doesn't suck.
So I'm trying to give me one moment, please. Moment.
While Katie's working on that, Annette, I just hopped onto Facebook and we're on there and we're live without a problem, but I don't have any comments that are showing on my side either.
Looks like Vicky is kindly sharing her screen with us, which would cover for you there. Okay.
Katie is muted.
I didn't mute her. I think she muted herself, I think.
Okay, so that should work. Thank you, Vicky. I did add one more map to this, but that's okay. So we can just use this. The first, the first review is a rezoning. Buchanan Township had submitted a request to rezone. This is a property that is right on the edge of the city and the township, but it is in the township. And the owner is Torsten LLC, but Mary Fisher, who is interested, has a purchase, an offer to purchase the property pending the rezoning. And she's with the nonprofit for Buchanan Scarecrow Charities. So she's interested in rezoning this from an R2, which is medium density residential to commercial. The property is a vacant lot located on Carroll Street and it is they're proposing to erect a building to store their scarecrows and also they have a robotics kind of club or something to that nature. This is adjacent or across the street or the site is the former overflow parking lot for Electro Voice, if you're familiar with that area. It is it consistent with the master plan? Their future land use has it as urban residential because it because of its proximity to the city. However, the city has in their master planner and their future land use, they're they have that area as kind of a mixed use. It's currently, there's some industrial and commercial on there. So the next slide. If I have access to that.
Can you pulse? There you go. Thank you.
Okay. So the next slide, there's the parcel and it the purple outline of the the map that you see, that's the city boundary. So it really literally is across the street from the city. And there is the railroad track to the south. So as far as it being their future land use, listing it as urban residential, that that's a fair assumption. If you go to the next slide. So I did a little cropping here and the parcel is again, right on that on the curve. I don't know if I can point to it. You guys can't see it. Yep, just over the little bit to the left, right there. And so just north of that, that's the 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 city's area, their future land use, and that's industrial and commercial. The city the the city building official or there's only administrator had submitted a letter in support, recognizing that this rezoning would be consistent and it and it would be supportive to the area. And their planning commission recommended approval. There was no public comment from their meetings.
Any discussion, comments, questions on the part of our group?
I would just say, Mr. President, that while it's not really in their future land use, as far as I can tell, but it's right across the street from that empty vacant building. There's really no other housing around it. So if they want to put a nice building in, yeah.
Yeah, I would concur with that. It's it's mixed use or commercialish looking stuff to the north, the railroad track to the south. I wouldn't deem that a terribly desirable piece of residential property. So I it certainly makes sense. Would anybody like to make a motion to that effect?
This is Shuniman. I'd like to make that motion that we concur with the Buchanan Township Planning Commission to go ahead with that.
Second by last.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Jennifer, if you could take a roll, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Hoyt.
Aye.
Krieger is absent. Lamert.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Juniman.
Yes.
Wagner.
Aye.
White is absent. You have seven yays.
All right, it carries. Thank you. Our next opportunity is PA 116 opportunity is also in Buchanan Township, interestingly enough.
So I'd like to. So this is also in Buchanan Township.
Oh. But Zink for Z E N K.
Okay. B E N K. Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So I will start off by saying that I my observation from the amount of PA 116s that we're receiving this month is I think in in part of the there has been a notice of funding for the Purchase Development Rights Program that was announced in June. And the application window is at the end of this month, at the 25th of September. But that is for the that is for townships that are participating in the PDR program. So Buchanan is not a participating township, so I the alternative for them is to also look at the PA 116 because that's available for all all farmers within the required meeting, the eligibility of the program. That's also true of Orinoco. They're not an eligible or they're not a participating PDR applicant. So it is kind of exciting to see an uptick in interest in the PA 116 program. So this first application is from Michael and Barbara Zink. They have two parcels that are adjacent to each other that add up to about 26 acres of land, but 18 are cultivated. Their agreement is for the for the minimum amount of 10 years and the property does meet the because it's under 40 acres, they need to meet a certain income per acre and they have they they make they gross more than $200, which is the requirement of the program. The soils are also prime farmland and of local importance. So if you go to the next screen, please. Next slide. Yeah. So there's the parcel. It is it does have some frontage on the the river, which is also nice from a perspective, preservation option and quality soils for farming. So next slide, please. And this is this map is actually chopped off from of our from our master plan. But it shows the farmland classification, the area where the arrow is pointing is pretty pretty much right where right around that area where these parcels are located. So it does indicate that the area is is in prime farmland and an area where it's also in our area, our target area for preservation. And at this point, we would either approve or accept the application and have it go forward to the municipality and then they move it forward to the state for their approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve this request.
Second, Lester.
I think you're muted, JB.
JB, you're muted.
My dog was barking earlier, so I apologize. If we could, do we have any questions? Hearing none, could we, Jennifer, if you could take a roll, please?
Foster.
Yes.
Freeling.
Don't they have like a switch in that warehouse?
It's great. Hoyt.
Yes.
Krieger is absent. Lamert.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Shuniman.
Yes.
Wagner.
Aye.
White is absent. We have seven yays.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Orinoco Township, we appear to have a productive PA 116 there.
I know. This one's a big one. So it's the one ownership, Daniel and Norma Nits, and they also are under the Lakeview Vineyards LLC. And they have 10 parcels for which they're requesting to participate or enroll into the PA 116. So I could have done these individually, but I thought because it was one family farm, I thought we could approach it and look at them in a in a one massive amount and just because it's a total of 334 acres in cultivation, and that's just exciting. So next slide. So well, you can see here, there's again 10 a 10 parcels ranging anywhere from four acres to 50 plus acres. So here's an overall like snapshot of their footprint in Orinoco Township and they have two other parcels that are in Baroda. So I think one is their maybe their homestead. So you can see that that's a little smidgen right right over there to the far left. So this is just the overall footprint and then I tried to zoom in on various groupings as they were sent to us as well. So next slide, please. This is also taken from our master plan and it shows it's just a a shorter quick snapshot of the agriculture priority areas that we identified in our master plan, which we're updating, but the area where the the concentration where these parcels are is where that red arrow is pointing kind of right in that strip. And then I just blew it up a little bit to the right so you can kind of get a idea where that where we're located. Next slide, please. So this is the first grouping and this is between Hollywood Road and Lemon Creek and Hinchman, East Hinchman on the north side. So it makes a nice kind of T or L, if we want to look at it backwards. Next slide. And here's another grouping on East Lemon Creek and Burgoyne.
Katie, are these in wine grapes or do you know Concord's?
They are fruit is what I so I think it's I think they're mostly vineyards. Yes.
They're primarily, they're primarily wine grapes, Lester.
Are they connected to one of the particular wineries or how do they do that?
It all depends upon which winery is going to pay on the most money.
So the stripes on these parcels are the rows of grapevines?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. And then here's one one more little grouping of so this, as you can see, the smallest parcel in on gar, that's just about four and a half acres and then but the whole area, the mass area is about 70 acres combined total. Next slide.
Katie, they are asking for a 50 year.
Yes, that's correct. So the minimum is 10 years and the maximum years you can enroll in a PA 116 is 99. So this is kind of a way for a family if they're wanting to, you know, ensure that the farming, the farmland can be available and be used for farmland. If in fact they sell or pass on and leave the property to their family or heirs, it's still going to be available and part, you know, it's it's still being used as farmland. So it helps keep the the price of land more affordable for farmers to farm.
Good, good.
Yeah, so it's this, the PA 116 is the one use, you know, one of the the best tools that we use here in Bering County to help try to preserve farmland. That doesn't that doesn't really cost anything. It's outside of doing zoning techniques. This is really the one program that state run.
Any other question?
Madam Chairman. Yes, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? This is Lois.
Yes, Lois.
Can can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Katie, this is a very nice presentation and if if you folks look at the map, it looks like it's smack dab in the middle of Bering County. Now, can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. I I was quite excited when I saw this and this is a pretty good example of the mission and the meaning of the PA 116 program. It's called the Land Preservation Program, as you all know. And I think that this is an example, if we ever have to explain to anyone what the program is. This request in Orinoco Township is a very good example of the value of the PA 116 program. And another thing, 50 years, well, we don't even know what's going to be next year due to this virus situation, but it does preserve it for 50 years. And if you look to your left on the map, it's right near the shoreline and there's going to be, we could assume a lot of growth in homes and so forth. It's an ideal situation if they would not be able to keep it in farming, it does present quite a picture for a nature preserve and I like the layout, the way the the parcels are spread around. Actually, it goes with the terrain, I'm sure, and or maybe farm markets. All these are in the mission, if you will, of land preservation and of course for agriculture. So I is there more discussion? I would be more than willing to move that we accept this application.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
This is Lamert. I will second it.
All right, any further discussion?
Can we just clarify that that motion is for each one of those because they were all they were individually individual applications. So
For all 10 parcels.
Right.
And parcels, this is a 10 parcel group on the application and it includes them all. And while I said it before, they are somewhat, if we might use the word scattered, which is ideal for the situation where that application is centered right in the middle of the county almost. So it's a good idea.
Any further questions? If not, Jennifer, we can take a roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Hoyt.
Aye.
Krieger is absent. Lamert.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Shuniman.
Yes.
Wagner.
Aye.
White is absent. You have seven yays.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. With that, we will move on to a discussion of the master plan again in Katie's hands.
So I've wrapped up the one-on-one conversation. So if if I didn't, if you didn't, if we didn't talk and you want to talk, I'm happy to still continue those conversations, but as of now, I've kind of, I'm done. I'm done talking to y'all. Point and we'll just kind of and and I put together a summary of the discussions or the out, you know, is generalized by all means, not in the details that we had in our conversations, but I put it in a summary format that I I don't know if I sent it to you already, but if not, I'll I'll follow. I'll send it to you after this meeting. Just kind of base the basic questions that I asked of each of each of those that I spoke with and then kind of the the comments that were were discussed and and areas that we need to maybe look at and consider. I've also been able to the GIS department just got a new staff member that I kind of feel like I was their first project. So they did some of the maps that I've been requesting for for our master plan. And I if if I can try to if if I can try to while I'm talking, see if I can share my screen again, I will try that and and I will see if it works. I just don't know. I will have to practice. It's so I got a new computer so that I can not be on my laptop.
See the little green button at the bottom of the menu bar that says share screen?
I know, but it wants me to go into my share my preferences or something. I got that.
You have to have up what you want to share.
Yeah.
That's okay. That's okay.
I'll send you the map and you can take a look at it, but the first map was I wanted to just see based off of our based off of the the tax system. So when everyone gets their taxes, there there's a number, there's a classification, there's a class and a classification. And they're ranged like from 101, for example, is agriculture. 201 is generally commercial and then it's broken out as well into like 201 is generally commercial. And then it's broken out as well into like 104, which would be vacant. Or, you know, a 404 or something is a residential vacant property. Now that's not necessarily what it's zoned and it's not necessarily what it's used. It's just what it's being taxed as. So it's not really the best identification for us, but it's always a good start. And I was real curious to see what that looks like to maybe what our, you know, we have a land use map that, that's pretty generalized. We also have our landscape map. So I wanted to kind of see if there's been any major, major shifts or changes that could be identified. And with some of the newer technology, I thought, well, this could be also nice for graphics and, and information to share. So I did just get this information last week, so I really haven't like looked at it in detail. Or, you know, kind of reviewed it from the perspective of what the, how broken out it goes or how general, it's very generalized. Can we, can we concentrate a little more maybe on that residential to see like, are we, is that sprawling happening? Is there, or are we getting larger tracts of ag? Is there, you know, what's happening? What's the story here that we want to understand and present? And then also with that same data and knowledge source, there was some new, what I thought was new data from the American Farmland Trust on, they've been doing a lot of, a lot of promoting of agriculture preservation. And they've done a fairly in-depth report on lands that are threatened, like our biggest threat and where our policies for our state and our local communities, how that is impacting agriculture throughout this, throughout the nation, but also specifically with states. So there was some data points and data files that were available for to, to us and for states and local communities. So I had asked to have that come, you know, available to us. However, it's all in GIS language and so it doesn't mean anything to me from a file format. So we did also get that map, but it, it's okay. I, I want to look at it a little more detailed. It's pretty grainy and I don't know how, I don't know if it's something we'll use or not, but I'll, I'm more than happy to also forward that on to you. So you can just see some, some of the little bits of info. And I've also been slowly, slowly but surely going through each of the municipal master plans and kind of extracting out the main points to do, you know, to create a table of the similarities across all the municipalities from an analysis perspective of the master plan and, and areas where there's certainly core, core elements of, of the, of how we should view the county master plan. And that's where we're at.
Super Katie, we appreciate all your continued efforts here and look forward to seeing the, the stuff you're going to send to us.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, core questions on the master plan status at this time?
Katie, how many other municipalities or governments within the county have a master plan? I mean, how many total are there?
So there's 39, there's 39 municipalities. And they all have one form or fashion with exception to Galleen. So now is it current, is it from, you know, 2000, 2007?
Right.
You know, that's, that's, you know, that's a different discussion. It's just the, the, you know, overall, the easiest and most simple, simple points is everyone has their rule, their, their heritage, their local community heritage. The ag, they all value ag. They all value the small town feel that even in the urban areas, they still have that small, that small town feel characteristics. So as to like where they see their economic growth or redevelopment opportunities or, you know, I think they all also, every one of them at some point have something about recreation because it's typically also part of the tools needed to be able to access DNR, DNR funding for parks and recreation plans. So they have those similarities. So I mean, there's a lot of similarities. It's just pulling them and having them mapped out on a, a table format. I think, I think it'll be helpful for, for all of us to, to look at as well as the community.
Katie, is there anything else you're looking to the commission for at this time?
No.
All right, any other questions on, on the master plan? Anything else to come before the commission this afternoon? If not, let me think.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Thank Jennifer and Katie for managing the meeting and, and in that for your, your help in making all this happen. We, we couldn't survive without all of your efforts in this new environment. And thank all of my fellow commissioners for your time this afternoon and working through our technological opportunities. With that, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the Bering County Planning Commission meeting at 3:09 PM.
Is there a second?
A second.
A foster.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Jennifer, if you could take a roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Hoyt.
Aye.
Krieger is absent. Lamart.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Shuniman.
Yes.
Wagner.
Aye.
White is absent. You have seven ayes.
All right, I think Ed carries today. One last quick thing. Katie, thank you for sending out your presentation in advance. That really helped level set, at least me. So
Yeah.
Let me see a few other nods on the screen. That's great. We'll see you all in another 30-ish days. Thanks again.